Good evening, we're gonna call to order the later Lincoln City Council meeting today is Thursday, December fifth. Twenty-four and it is six oh one. If I could stand for the pledge of allegiance. United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, on the bottom, and in this world, liberty and justice for all. Get faster now.
This is a reading from Psalm twenty-two. You who fear the Lord, praise him, all you offspring of Jacob glorifying. Stand in awe, all you offspring of Israel. For he did not despise or abhor the affliction of the afflicted. He did not hide his face from me, but heard when I cried to him. From you comes my praise in great congregation, by vows I will pay before those who fear him. The poor shall eat and be satisfied, those who seek him shall praise the Lord. May your hearts live forever. All the ends of the earth shall remember in terms of the Lord, and all the families of the nations shall worship before him. For dominion belongs to the Lord, and he rules over the nations. Let's pray. Lord God, you are the ruler of all of the universe, putting here in Lincoln. We look to you, Lord, for guidance in all the deliberations of this meeting this evening. We pray that you would put your spirit in the leaders of this this city. And that you would guide them in their discussions, guide them in their decisions, and guide them in their leadership, the citizens of this great city. We pray, Lord, that you'd be with the citizens of this city as we look forward to the coming of the Messiah. We pray, Lord, that you would fill us with the love that you give us, the grace that you bestowed on us. Your son, whose birth we celebrate later this month. We pray all this in your precious holy name. Amen.
Davis here. You're in soon.
Here.
You're Burglin here, and our time is absent. And first, under this says we have the agenda approval.
I may, I would like to make a motion for the agenda. It's my understanding that there are several people here who would like to speak regarding the trailer parking ordinance. But I'd like to make a motion to add, for our parking ordinance, especially.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So we have it first by Councilman Yarmstand, second by Councilman Davis. All in favor?
Aye.
And so. And so I will put that first before. If you know. After. So, uh, this is public comment period. If you would like to make comments, please come to the podium. As a reminder, this has to be on the agenda. Stay your day, please. So, okay.
Chris, Chris Logan, uh, just wanted to mention something about the trailer, um, ordinance. Uh, the other night I got a ticket for it, but I had, uh, I took a trip to Minneapolis and back in one day to pick up some supplies I needed for business. And I got back late about eleven o'clock and then I came out in the morning. I was gonna move this stuff to my shop in Mizlark. And, um, I still have a load on the trailer. It was attached to the truck. Uh, so I got a ticket, which is, it's whatever, but, uh, I, I think the ordinance would be more reasonable if it just took into account, um, people that are doing work around here. And, um, sometimes they don't get a chance to go park the trailer in a, in the best spot, probably. You know, maybe because they're tired or whatever. But I think, I think if it's still attached to a truck and it's, it's not actually being stored on the side of the road. It would be, uh, you know, I don't think guys should get tickets if they're, uh, they have a load on the truck if you got home late at night. They, uh, didn't get a chance to do something and then there's a lot of guy, a lot of working guys around here that make their living out of trailers. And, um, I just think it's burdensome to them to worry about getting fines if they park their trailer on the side of the road for the plows, right? So I appreciate if you guys consider, um, putting something in there that allows people to do that, uh, get punished for it. And also make sure that people don't take advantage of the law either, because I think it's reasonable not to have trailers parked on the side of the road, stored there in the way of the plows and stuff like that. So within reason, of course. So people are taking advantage of it, yeah. They should, you know, get fined or whatever, and that way they're not here. But if it's a, it's a situation where, you know, they're not paying attention to that. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Brandon Chuk, Mayor Brooklyn, Council. So first and foremost, I would like to thank the mayor for attending that big membership meeting and standing up for the citizens and watching up for the girl of the Lincoln this week. I'm here to talk about the trailer ordinance since I was one of the council members on council when it was in place. Although background, we were having issues with campers parked on the street all winter long, trailers parked on the street not getting moved. Um, at the time, Rob Dixon was the Public Works Director. So we sat down, Vogel Law Firm, um, Rob, and then the police department, we drafted a new ordinance for trailers for the winter. They pretty much followed one of this. Um, so the intent was not to, what we did, the intent was not to punish those who work every day and give them tickets. I mean, Bobcats, we had stairs, as long as it was up to a vehicle and it wasn't parked there for days on end. We, that wasn't the intent. The intent was that the campers, two stunt trailers that were sitting there all winter long or for weeks on end. And maybe we didn't thread it right at the time, you know, we were just doing with what we had. Um, we were gonna make it a little more convenient and we were told by Justin not to because we needed some teeth and if something did happen that we could enforce it. So that was the intent when we did it. So I was just figuring to give you a little background. Thanks.
Second call for public comment. And third and final call for public comment. Okay, saying done, we'll go on to the consent agenda. Under consent agenda, we have the November twenty-first, twenty twenty-four minutes. Are there any corrections?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda minutes for eleven twenty-one, twenty-four.
Well, second. We have a first and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The first. Under full business, this is our regionalization, we sent the.
Evening. I don't think there's much of an update. Uh, the council has approved, uh, having the easiness, uh, raised. I got an update from Frank before the meeting. Uh, there's some information that your base you want in the city. Information and, uh, we'll get that to the embrace room. So I don't know if that needs to be on the agenda now or can forward that. I think the next step is to wait for it to begin this. We need to report stuff and then, um, we'll make. That's all.
We can take that off. Business.
I think so. We have some good.
Under number nine, our board state aid increased discussion. I don't see anybody in the audience from parks. Excuse me, but I have, we have time to take, to take a look at. I have a.
And I'm looking at any others. I mean, I really don't against increase or like there's this first one is, I don't know if we have like a realistic level of what, you know, what.
Well, the, excuse me, I actually had talked to the former auditor. Uh, because when we were going through the budget process, it was agreed to increase, uh, and there is at ten percent, I believe, is what the special for the state. So in that.
Sorry, forward the.
Seven, seven, seven twenty, right? Yep.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Please. And, uh, so that seven thirty would go up to ten percent. Yes. Great, because when I had talked to them, they have mentioned entering ten. Ten to twelve. I, I understand that anytime there's an increases. For the city. But again, this is thirty years without an increase or taking and especially with the new development coming through, the needs are. And citizens. So, and I understand there is, first, yeah, twenty-five percent, um, sales tax, but stated somewhere.
Lot personnel staffs on their team and set on yourself. Um, I guess my opinion is that, especially since they wanted to take on the low end of that range.
Right, because that could go, it's between zero and thirty.
So I guess I wouldn't have any objections to increase them under ten percent. See, I'll take a whole thirty here and something else to change. Yeah, I guess I would make a motion to increase that especially to ten percent.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any discussion? No. All right, uh, can I get a little call? Instead?
Yes.
And this?
Yes.
Yes, and in discussions with her, unless she would go with what, um, table just her approved. However, to be a board of my own, my village, that was. Thank you. I don't know. If I could do that, we will have to come back with.
Yes, I understand where is the percentage.
I think it is, I think it is. Now that we're just talking about that, I know Century Code, this is going back to nineteen ninety-five. Up to thirty percent. So I'll take.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll look if you guys have your.
Okay. Uh, well, because you might have discussion points on the day they counsel here. Okay, so you're descend out. So maybe we can come back.
We'll go, I'll, we'll look into it in the, this, you can't take action on the.
Right. Good, perfect. All right, so, um, number ten, we have, uh, they think also since, uh, seed opening, we have had three citizen trusts, ones who live to the city. And, um, I guess that would be a discussion here, but. And.
I don't, I haven't any question. I think that Gavin has sent an email that is part of the agenda packet. Which outlines, there's nothing in Lincoln's ordinances on these in the council. Section forty oh eight oh eight of Century Code sets out, um, processes that can be used. Um, if there's a vacancy in the council, which we have. So those options are the council and, um, those vacancies to appointment by the council. Uh, the council can call a special election. And where the citizens, I think the time for this is past, since this could have been for an election. So I think as it sits now with the council, for a council's decision, you know, to point, uh, placement, um, or to call for a special election.
And I know that the discussion prior was to hopefully avoid the cost of a special election. Uh, we do have three interest firms, like I said, and one of the things that you had mentioned comes from your study is that the last time this happened, there was a committee that got together. This, however, is three forms, so I don't know what's the desire is from council as far as. Or there's still to be a committee to take a look at these three and ask two on for further consideration in council or for us to do the. To, uh, have an appointment for all three? No. Or the council would do it rather than citizen interests. Because initially they had ten coming, we could narrow it down to two or three, but we've only got three, so correct. Are you opposed of, um, choosing and appointing a person tonight? Uh, well, I I don't know.
All current council members.
And, and then, um, and is there a timeframe that we have on to act on these? And I guess on, on my thought, if if you've had the opportunity to take a look at it, think about it, um, and know who? Or if we want to have all three come in just as um, not necessarily interview, but just to talk about a process under where or, um.
People that.
If it was everybody, yes, if it was perhaps president of all space. I, I guess ultimately it's gonna be a council decision, but it's just a vendor power.
I think once Ann can look over these as well. Maybe next meeting that I think as collective, the council can appoint another council member.
Okay, and not have a special meeting, so that person could be here.
I mean, we still have time, so we could still.
Okay, I will not be here on the nineteenth. Okay, so I was gonna. So me personally, it's not that I. Council decision, but I could like. Correct, so.
Would it be something?
Well. Yes, so, but like I said, that doesn't just can't be decided ahead of time. But I would not be able to do a square.
Since there isn't a deadline that this has to be done, I feel it would be appropriate for, that is all through council members to be present, um. Maybe we can put this on to the next meeting's agenda to have some discussion and possibly then determine if.
Well, and if you three decide. You know, just the square.
I think that would be.
Are you going to?
Um, I, yes, I am familiar with two of the three applicants, so I feel like it'd probably be good to at least get someone background on it. I would have an objection if we'd be able to find some time together to kind of have discussions.
If, that open, yeah, for sure.
Okay, so I'd say prior to the next meeting, then we'll like be trying to set up, come with each other. The three submitted.
On the same day?
It's possible.
So then there would be a special meeting because then it would be.
Or to all three of us. I, I guess I was initially just making a bread and less pressure, but it, it'd be more full grid type.
I think. I think this is your drawing between a quorum of the council and an official meeting of just a couple of members of the council, it's not a simple invite upon. So if you have a meeting that is a quorum of the council, then certainly the open meeting laws apply. But if you set an official meeting of two of you to do something on behalf of the council as part of the process, that is an open meeting as well. So the quorum for sure, if you have a quorum, it's an open meeting, but if you delegate it or you create some kind of official meeting, that's also an open meeting. So the only way that, that I can say that, if, if, if informally the members of the council want to reach out to me, it was in a informal manner, which is. Right. That, that's fine, but once it becomes kind of a, uh, formalized process, then, and the open meeting laws apply and whatever. Meeting of the entire council, if you're gonna have to do it.
Basically, if you're gonna do it, just do it.
That would be what my recommendation would be is just simply save a time for interviews and, um, have members of the council who would be present.
So could we? You go, I love, I like that idea.
Good, I have no objection to it. We just asked if we could. Three candidates.
Because then there's also, you know, assuming council. So, um, what are your schedules like for last week? Do you have anything on my calendar? Right, for the kids anyway?
But this next week, I'll have a little trouble with the office before five. Uh, if you need, uh, for me, otherwise, after that, prior to our next.
Okay, and, and I would assume, well, I would have to assume that there are one complex, also if they live. So.
It's like you have to be the best for.
Be best for everyone, right, so. Maybe reach out to them. It's free of them. With a couple different times. For next week.
I'm just, because I'm interested that would work best for you.
I mean, I'm open, so I mean.
Um, if you like, I could probably take the initiative to reach out to all three of them, see what days would best for them.
That's okay.
Try to know something.
Sounds good, and then just.
Sounds good.
Perfect. Thank you for. Next. We would under, are under new business, number eleven, is this man of P O arrived twenty fifty and. And ripple.
Thank you, Mayor Brooklyn, council members. Um, thanks a lot for having us here. Presentation, as Mayor Brooklyn mentioned, my name is Kim Ripple, I'm a transportation planner, we're the smart and data metropolitan planning organization. I'm here to introduce the MPO's consultant, Jason Carby of H D R, who is joining us online tonight. Um, I'm also here to introduce the arrive twenty fifty Metropolitan Transportation Plan, which is the reason for our being here. Arrive twenty fifty is a major planning document that consists of the MPO, the North Dakota, the OT, and our local jurisdictions, of which the city of Lincoln is one, in envisioning and preparing for the future of local transportation network needs. More specifically, it helps local municipalities to use federal transportation dollars to improve the network to expansion or maintenance. We've been working on this project for about a year and a half, and Jason's presentation will provide you an outline of how we prepared for the study, how public input was used throughout the process, and what overarching goals, development themes, and grant projects we hope to pursue upon possible acceptance of this master plan. The Lincoln Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting on October twenty-ninth recommended acceptance of the M T P. And tonight, the MPO is requesting that the Lincoln City Council approve the arrive twenty fifty Metropolitan Transportation Plan through a resolution of adoption, which was included as part of your meeting packet, I believe. The resolution in your packet, however, did have a typo, and that's been corrected to accurately let the spelling of Mayor Brooklyn's name and has been invited to the auditor. Uh, the MPO did advertise this meeting as a public hearing, and either Jason or I would be happy to stand for any questions at the conclusion of his presentation that he will be sharing online via.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect. Hopefully you can see the screen now too, the slides.
Yes.
All right. Great, thanks, Kim, and and nice to be with you all this evening. Sorry, I couldn't be there in person tonight. Uh, do appreciate the opportunity to talk about the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. Um, I'm gonna give a really high-level overview of the content of the document, and if at any point you guys. Um, had more questions, um, be more than willing to answer those. Um, there are eleven chapters. We um, I'm I'm gonna walk through each of them at a high level, and if, again, like I said, if you want to dig in a little further, we're more than happy to. Um, talk about that. It's a very extensive document. Kim touched on the fact that we had a very. Um, extensive process. We engaged quite a bit with Mayor Burgland and Greg and. Um, in helping kind of develop this plan, but um, I'm gonna try to do it in a little over five minutes tonight, so um. If if you bear with me and ask me questions where you want to know more. Um, but and Kim touched on this. This is a a major transportation planning document. It's one of the core um. Uh, documents, uh, products that the MPO uh produces. Um, in association with its five entity uh, you know, government bodies that make up the MPO. That's the city of Lincoln, the city of Bismarck, the city of Mandan, and then Burley and Morton Counties. Um, it's updated every five years. Um, it's called arrive twenty fifty because we're looking out to the year twenty fifty. We're required to look twenty-plus years. Um, we really go through and try to look at what, you know, needs are emerging for the entire. Um, we call it multimodal, but that just means, you know, for for people that walk, people that bike, people that drive. Um, you know, bus riders, freight movement, all of that. We really look at, you know, what what's really required from all that from a variety of perspectives. And we'll talk about this, but it's physically constrained. Um, we have a a big list of ideas for this plan. Um, but a- as we'll discuss, um, we need to show things that are reasonably fundable, and so we have a rather conservative list of projects, but um, there's additional. Um, illustrative projects that we'll show um that are po- po- possibilities um that we we could implement over this planning horizon as more funding comes available. Um, so basically, th- there's um some federal goals that this needs to kind of align with and federal performance requirements. Um, the nice thing about this is that it's a very flexible process, and it's very much tailored. Um, to the local communities and the public engagement that we'd received along the way. Um, so, you know, aligning it with, you know, US Department of Transportation, North Dakota Department of Transportation, but also really with all of the communities and citizens. We had eight different goal areas that kind of helped shape this. Um, and we'll kind of talk about each of these as we walk through this. Uh, but I I did touch on public engagement was a really big part of this. Um, we had both online and in-person opportunities um to engage and and give input on the plan to help shape that plan. Um, we had um open houses, we had pop-up events on both sides of the river. Um, the entire time we were in touch. Um, and and the the process was really guided uh through technical um committees. Um, you know, folks like Greg, folks like Mayor Burgland, kind of helping direct, you know, decision-making as we went through and got more information from the public and got more information from the data that was available. Um, and so that that was really our steering committee as we went through this. Um, there's a chapter that kind of gives a a background on just growth in the metro area, how it's kind of changed over time, you know, from a, you know, uh, you know, the people. Um, housing, but also, you know, commuting characteristics, the things that really drive transportation. Um, and then we have a a rather extensive uh chapter on baseline system performance. This is essentially, you know, how is the system performing today from a variety of perspectives? One of the key ones that we really focus on is safety. This is the most. Um, important thing in our in our industry is really, how do we provide a system and services that, you know, get people where they need to go safely? We're really focused on um reducing. Um, serious injury and fatal crashes. Um, and so we looked at, you know, kind of hotspots where we see the most crashes, but also looking at regional overall trends from year to year. How does that change? How does that impact, you know, um, different types of crashes? Also kind of focused on mobility, um, looked at level of service and congestion. Um, trying to, you know, identify where we're anticipating today, we have the most congestion, but also going into the future, and we'll kind of touch on that here in the upcoming slides. Um, you know, there's a, like I said, a range of perspectives, freight, bicycle and pedestrian connectivity. Um, asset management, taking care of the system we've got today is really important. Cross-area travel has always been a key area um in the Bismarck, Mandan, Lincoln area. Um, and north-south continuity and just the ability to go from the north side of town to the south side of town. Um, you know, basically, in the east side of the river has always been. Um, one of those key issues, and this plan's kind of laid out some long-term vision projects to help facilitate that. Um, we also, again, it's a twenty fifty plan, we look to the future, anticipate continued um growth that we we think the metro area will by the year twenty fifty continue to grow about thirty to forty percent. In terms of population, households, and jobs, and so we, you can see we've got areas of growth kind of outlined for households and for employment. Where we anticipate all this is gonna happen, and that really drives um some of the technical analysis that we do about where we anticipate future travel to start popping up. And you can see, you know, we anticipate a lot of growth. Um, you know, all all over the metro area, but you see some there um in the Lincoln area as well. And so then we just kind of summarize, you know, how how much trips go up, how much the length of travel, how much time we spend traveling, and and how do travel delays start to add up? Um, and then we, you know, kind of have that baseline of, we we know where we are today, we have a good idea of where we think we're going in the future. What are the range of options, improvements, strategies um that we could implement and consider? Um, to help, you know, help us transition safely and with, you know, connection and mobility um through the year twenty fifty. And so we had a wide range of projects um that we considered um through this process. You know, we've we've got improvements on Sixty-Sixth Street there. Um, you know, connections um on, you know, improved connections on um. Uh, various connections back into Bismarck from Lincoln, a new potential interchange up at I ninety-four. Um, also, we've got some kind of big regional projects, like a new northern bridge crossing of the Missouri River. Um, you know, opportunities maybe for over on the Mandan side, an extension of McKenzie Drive. Um, as is kind of a new east-west connection uh for that community, just a range of some some big kind of. Big project ideas that in the long term make a lot of sense, but we might not have, you know, the 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 funding right now to to tackle them. And so on that topic of funding. Um, we we've seen historically uh that that the cost for improving transportation have outgrown. Um, our 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 revenues, and so we're anticipating that trend to continue into the future, and so long-term, our our transportation um. Purchasing power we're anticipating will continue to go down. So with that is kind of the backdrop. Um, the the plan includes what we call that fiscally constrained plan. So these are the things that work are kind of in those. Um, cat through the different funding categories that um each of the communities thought. Uh, made sense um in terms of what they could afford. Um. How it fit with the federal funding that's available. Um, and then you can see, we've got a range of different types of projects here. We've got some um roadway widening. So for instance, we've got that. That Project Twenty-Five A and Twenty-Five B, East Main or Highway Ten, that connection between Bismarck Expressway and Sixty-Sixth Street. Um, that would be in the mid and long term out in the future, a potential widening project. Um, and potential improvements um with roadway rehabilitation, so just taking care of the the infrastructure that we've got today. Um, on Fifty-Sixth, or sorry, Fifty-Second and Sixty-Sixth. Um, and also, you know, new trails and side paths, um, actually, some trail rehab rehabilitation, taking care of trails that we've already got. Um, and potential projects for um safety. Um, looking at intersection improvements, for instance, over at Lincoln and and Yagan Road. And so that was our fiscally constrained plan. Um, but we're also keeping that in the back pocket, that whole list of of all the other options as funding becomes available, whether it's from federal sources, state sources. Or funding trends change, um, these projects can be kind of promoted, you know, called up out of the bullpen and um and and kind of brought into this plan. And finally, the last chapter was really about uh federal compliance, and this is just making sure that we we demonstrate um to the, you know, all the different decision-makers. Um, at the state and federal level that, you know, we have this locally tailored plan, but it um really, you know, reflects the the goals of the the US Department of Transportation as well. And that is the end of my presentation. Um, I don't know if anybody had questions. I'm gonna take myself off of share mode so I can see faces better.
Any questions? You don't currently have a question, no? Okay. No questions appear to be on this end.
Again, we did advertise this as a public hearing. Um, barring any questions or comments, we should be looking for a motion of approval to adopt by resolution of adoption.
And before doing that, then I'd offer a floor to anyone. That we have questions or comments. I see none.
I'm gonna make a motion to adopt the resolution of adoption for the Metropolitan Transportation Plan.
I think we have a motion on the table, and it's the second. Also. First and second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed. So many. And we'll have a full call vote for that. Davis?
Yes.
Princeton?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Jason. Thank you, Ken.
You are.
Yes. On the agenda, we can move up to. Discussion. Uh, the trailer parking.
I think it'd be appropriate for us to take another look at this ordinance. Something, I guess, that I have in mind is. We currently have an ordinance stating that it'll be something for forty hours at a spot. I think it's all be appropriate for us to amend this trailer ordinance and state that. It could only be a trailer, can be parked as long as it's attached to a tow vehicle. But then it would still fall relevant to some ordinance where it can only be at that spot. With maybe two days. If it's any longer than two days. Then it's subject to.
For the two days, uh, council, then you're instead. Are we giving too much leeway in case a storm comes?
I think that that's kind of my reason for putting in that aspect of the tow vehicle showing that it can be moved at a moment's notice. I mean, it's pretty rare we don't have some kind of notice that a winter storm is coming. I think that would allow more leeway for the people that are doing the work in our city to be able to park their trailers anytime. The great ordinance, you know, just parking on the street for. Two hours in front of somebody's house, mid-days, technically.
But it was also stated that if it is for work campuses. Um, and I'm playing devil's advocate here. If you're here doing work, you're gonna be working where that truck is located with. Right? Or contacting the city, which happens at this time. You know, my understanding. They said, I mean, this was an amendment to an agenda. So.
For um. Ordinance purposes, if we were to change it. And or, you know, to amend the ordinance, would you have a problem with it just being twenty-four hours of a notice to a day, because they know, you know what I mean?
I mean, in this situation, I guess I don't think that would be a problem, because it seems like most of these situations that you're in now, where they're being taken. Are only there for a matter of a few hours, like a couple of nights or something like that, wasn't waiting to have to take it somewhere, which is so.
Right.
I don't think that would be an issue.
I. I I think there are also people that have overweight vehicles parked near around.
Just a mic. You're talking about maybe the seventeen.
Yes, yes. Now, I I like the idea of. Okay, I'm just gonna do her tour through some. Please chief rather, chief Hiddings.
Good evening, good morning. I would say the biggest thing that that I think could be addressed in changing this is the type of trailer that's out there. I I would think that everyone would be in agreeance during the winter time, nobody wants campers parked out there at any time, boats, things of that nature. Work trailers, one hundred percent, like. People gotta work and to hook them up or take them apart um each night can be a real pain. Um, and so addressing that portion first, I would say we avoid the. Adding a new twenty-four hour, if we do a forty-eight hour. Um, also the same thing, but also adding into it, looking at the uh emergency portion of. There's a snowfall, to be able to say that, because vehicles only been out there for. You know, fourteen hours, we can't do anything, even though there was, you know, a huge snowstorm, but being able to do that is really the only reason. We enforce it on our side is to make sure that our public works guys can easily remove the snow from the streets so people can come and go. Um. And so that is really the biggest piece. I I would love to see um a revision to it, to see what we can do, because. Our officers read this and they base it off, like, what is it here? And it's any any trailer, anywhere on any street. Has to be removed, um, and if it's not, it's cited. Um, so to give them a little bit more to say, yes, we have a forty-eight hour um. Uh, time period for them to be done, or if there is uh an emergency, so snow type thing, that everything needs to be removed. Um, immediately, uh, prior storm removal, or it could be a um violation of the ordinance. And again, going back and looking um. Really, what it would, what it would address is your. So boat trailer, snowmobile trailer. The camper, uh, motorhome, housecar, um, any of those items that. Really could need to be moved off anyways, um, but to understand that work trailers, one hundred percent, uh, and addressing that, that I I would say. I I would agree with uh Compton Lawrence didn't say. It needs to be, this should be looked at, and we should look at a review and change of it. Um, while at the same time, understanding why it's in place, and really, it's in place to make sure that. During the winter months, there's snow removal, it's much easier for our public works uh in the department, um, so that they don't have to keep running into stone. Um, because we can always sit back and wait for them to call us, but by that time, it's too late. Um, they're either possibly in town working or something like that, so one hundred percent, I would agree, um, and I would love to sit in on it to to assist with whatever we can. But keeping in mind that the biggest piece of this, I would say, is identifying what types of trailers do we not want from. November first until March third of this year, regardless. Um, I think that will help clear up a lot of stuff. Um, because, yes, a lot of the trailers we're seeing right now, a construction trailer, there were trailers. And so I fully understand that, and I also agree, um, if it's hooked up to a vehicle, one hundred percent, like, I know it can be moved. Being moved immediately if needed, um, and so also addressing that, a big portion on our side is been training with my officers to make sure that they know, like, you know, this is. This is what the ordinance says, but. This is the expectation from the city, uh, from our community, and from more and most importantly, my son was like, this is the expectation of what we have uh going forward, so. I opened it up to questions, then there's a question.
Can I just clarify, there's some confusion, I think, because. Thirteen thirteen seventeen has a listing of the types of. Trailers and things that cannot be on the streets after the first, and listing is any boats, snowmobile, bumper-pulled travel trailer. Fifth-wheel trailer, pull-type camper, pickup camper, motorhome, housecar, bus, mini motorhome. Or trailer, so I guess maybe.
Has that last one.
Word out, maybe uh. Maybe would resolve the the some of this concern. Um, and then I guess we could look at. Park or leave standing that. And again, I know one of my colleagues may help draft this, but it was drafted, but I'm not wild about that that idea, because I don't know what that means.
Right.
Park or leave standing, I mean, that that technically would preclude. Any trailer on the park at any time or left at any time, and I don't.
Even back in two of you.
Yeah. I don't think that's the the, I don't think that's a, you know, you you expect some. Discretion within law enforcement, but I think that that it would make sense to try to revise some of that English meaning to. To put some. Either time, the problem with the timeline at that though is that these have to come take it. And then come back a second time, right? So they got, you gotta develop that, who is part of the. I I'm I'm in favor of provide from the from the city attorney's standpoint, I'm in favor of revising this, I'm not in favor of doing it. Tonight.
Correct.
Yes, yes, and that would be my concern is that we should probably probably put some thought into not.
Yeah.
Not making one thing better and then making two things worse in the, in the under sense, yeah.
Well, and and honestly, I would like to take a look at a lot of the deterrence parking. Well, and, and honestly, I would like to take a look at a lot of the deterrent parking. Um, situations in town because you drive around and people have big work trucks. That are parked out. Possibly overweight and they're being interested too. So, uh, even though that's not legal. Right? According to our ordinance, nor should they, because our roads are meant for that. So this is a great time to address all of those things. So, thank you, Chief. Thank you.
Thank you.
So as far as take a look at the ordinance. The Bena, that it needs to be. Yes, definitely needs to be revised.
Come some revised language. Let's get some options.
Okay, and then can we add onto that? Those overweight vehicles that are parked. And the roads that there are mostly beyond that. Uh, most attorney, council, mayor, can we also add into that no shipping containers parked on streets into this ordinance? I believe that over.
You confess that I do not have the code memorized. And I do not have the traffic code memorized, so I'm not through what is all kinds of. My colleague, Dax, who's here, he does all the prosecution himself, is something I'll work with him.
Okay.
And we, we do a lot of the problem, we model. We can see it as a model called, I'm just updating that. So we'll look at, we'll look at some of those.
Are you referring like? For this winter parking, are you talking about just being a jet?
I mean, technically, no, right? Because we really don't want shipping containers parked in the winter, we don't really want shipping containers parked in the summer either. Well, because there was somebody that had one. But they were too interested because of the warning pace. It doesn't hurt to take a look at it since it was already done once already.
We'll do an overview of that. One of the issues with code, as we talked about, is when we start pulling on one string.
Right.
It unravels. Yeah, and, and, um. Unless the council, I think, will say, oh, kind of, right, I think just take this kind of the on thing. So, but we'll look at, we'll look at parking. Trailers, um, there's another ordinance that has to do with semi, uh. Just kind of look at the, the semi full trailers, which I'm not going to be concerned, I understand that that issues, but we'll take a look at that and come some.
Thank you, attorney. Thank you. All right, next, any other discussions? All right, so number 12, Public Works, mastic purchase. Are you of a director, are you going to?
Um. So we've been discussing. The purchase of mast and that like several of the streets for renters. Essentially mastic is. Relatively, it's a heavier duty version of just the regular tar ceiling. Except for, I shouldn't be maybe total or deep dog.
Describing mastic?
Yeah.
Okay, council fairs. Um, so mastics basically just like a, a tar material that they put. Um, like an artificial sand in or like a binder to help hold it together and to support weight. And basically what they do with it is when they put it in, it fills the crack, but also just levels itself with the road. So that way you don't get any more of the dips that you're driving through around town. And basically didn't fills the bigger cracks that we have that haven't come into the dips yet, we'll call them. So basically what we're trying to do is get all of the new side of town done first. To maintain the roads that we have up there so we, they don't get any worse. And then we also talked about doing. Sections of the south side that are the worst areas and getting those done along with the north. But the thing is, it costs a little bit more money and then we initially planned for tarring. Um, so basically we just kind of want to get. Get rolling so that way we can get it done spring of the year and have it for the summer. To help everybody out with their little bit of suspension that they left on their cars.
We did receive some pricing from a company recently. The plan was to purchase the mastic material from them. And then they were willing to provide the labor and cost. But also train our public works employees so that in the future, if we want to purchase one of this burner equipment that is used for applying the mastic. Our employees could then maintain the route, try to then have them bring in a company from out of state or around the state to. Basically paying more cash than it's due. We did get that pricing from them and. Full disclosure, I was intending on at the meeting tonight, speaking about how it appears that there's no one who's going to provide this training to us. But to do our due diligence. Uh, an employee of all the first department made a few phone calls yesterday, found out there is at least one other place that is willing to do training as well. So now that we have that information, we're pretty much. My plan was that we, since this was such a specialized product that we're only being able to contract correctly with this. Company, but since we know somebody else can provide the train as well, we will have to send this over to make sure that everything is. Done to the ordinance upon we do the best that we can by yourself. I think, uh, we're gonna want to get that rolling right away because this one place that we did get our initial price from, if you have a discount offer right now, if it's purchased by January 10. If I'm not mistaken, I don't have to leave it up front.
Yeah.
So we'll want to get this rolling quick in case they are the ones that.
Could go with.
Are the best bid, yeah, they're on the trail, we can take that.
Well, and we also, what it is, is the place that the other company that does the trading as well, they also use the same material. As the other company that we talked to and how we're pricing about from, so buying the material would still be the same stuff. It's just, we have to put it out for bids for who's going to apply our material. Because if we buy it, it's cheaper for us to purchase all the material and then have the company come in and do the job. So if we buy it ourselves, the company that we hire can't upcharge it, so.
So the, the company locally that could do the training, they don't provide the service, the initial service. You mean supplies?
To, to do the job.
To do the job.
Yes, they do do the job. When we meet training is we would have them come out, do the job and we would basically like a job shadow type deal. Or we would come with and watch and help and do whatever we can do to.
So this is possibly going with local persons. Obviously, so.
Right. And it's basically all depends on how they, each company puts the material down. Each company has their own way of doing it. And I know, um, the company in Minnesota has one more step to their process to make it last longer and be better and do all that stuff. So, um, if we do put this out for bids, I think we need to put in there that all the steps. To make it so it's going to last and we're not spending a lot of money on something we're going to have to redo in a year or two.
You said this lasts five years.
Well, this will last forever. It'll last until we rip the road up, hopefully, if they apply it, right?
So, so basically we're just gonna have to make a very narrow spec of what we're gonna require for this. Make sure it's material that, well, there's a different, couple of different kinds of the mastic. Um, not all of the same quality depending on the hitter who's using it. So we want to be specific with. The mastic that we get, we want to be specific with the steps that are used to apply the mastic.
Yes.
And so just write the RFP for.
Yes, happy what it is to you.
Yeah, yes.
And then. See what you get. Right, yeah, see if they'll, if there are other companies willing to do that, steps that we would like, and if they're not, then. That only leaves us with one option, so. Yes, yep, so.
So as we have somebody.
Yes, since there is more than one source that work.
Yes. Um, nope, how's the timing? How's this timing?
So I'll put there, RFP is then that's going to be required, they posted twice and.
Just has to be advertised once.
Well, my question is, do we have to have the RFP for the material or can we buy the material now and give the discount to them? We're just gonna have to. Help them, because if they're going to use the same material that we require in the RFP, could we not purchase that and get the discount? That we don't miss out on that or?
But would the other company give a discount to you?
No, they don't supply it. So the company directly buys it, the material from the company in Minnesota. So it's going to be the exact same material whether they do it or they do it. And it's just, if these guys do it, they're going to buy it and they're going to mark it up and then we're going to have to pay their markup price where we buy it ourselves. It'd be cheaper for us in the long run.
So the RFP would work.
Basically, yes, just applying the product, not for the product.
I recommend just putting, if you're going to do an RFP, with the RFP. Service is associating the material, seeing what comes in and we have the answer. You get one bid from one source or even a low bid from a source, I mean, and I prefer that if it was just returning the RFP. And just make sure the specification is exactly the training they want. I think that's the.
And is, and you said it has to be requested once, so.
Yes, yeah.
Advertised. And it's.
Is, is there just a timeout or that? Yep. Yes.
And so we'd still be able to, because they're doing it, finding the discount period?
I don't see why, when people get all the information in. Basically, you can buy the next.
The RFP, for you to mention.
Yes, since there isn't a timeline that it has to be advertised, to make sure that it's advertised and it was prepared. Or whatever. Have whatever some middles come in and have them just be.
Yeah.
With the determination.
Yeah, and what I would say is that even if. Put the RFP out. It, it will help the council. Determine whether or not there's a competitive market for them, right? That's, that's really the. Turning point for whether or not we have to be competitive bidding. One of the things is whether or not there's a market and. Put the RFP out and see if you get, that you're going to know that this market and that like I'll answer that question and then you, yeah, it was all.
Makes sense.
Thank you.
I'll put you on, I want to.
I gotta grab my papers now.
Oh. Continue on with I go for the public works, the snow pusher or no, yes, snow pusher places.
Okay. Okay, so. So there, so the last meeting, we talked about, um, looking at purchasing a new snow pusher for our, um, compact loader that we have. Um, you guys asked me to get some prices, I did call around and get some prices, I talked to Titan Machinery. And I talked to Custom Trucking Equipment. Um, Titan Machinery is on our source, well, they're a source well member, Custom Trucking Equipment is not. I basically just got their pricing just for a comparison on what kind of a deal we are dealing with this. Um, so basically the plow that we were looking at for, um, this custom truck, uh, for this. From Titan Machinery was like an AMI cloud, it's exactly like the one we have for the big loader. Like year before last. Like two years ago. It was like that one, so, um, it'll have the wings, not a gate, just wings, so you can make it wider or narrower, so. That's what we got from Titan. The plow we got from Custom Truck is basically the same kind of plow, just a little bit different. They don't carry AMI, so I got a quote for that and they are. Looking at $21,700 for that plow from Custom Truck and the plow that we were looking at from Titan. Is about 16,212.
You mentioned before that you look at selling.
Yes.
Do you have a ballpark idea of what you expect to be able to get out of them?
I hope for at least $5,000 for that. Um, I know it. Uh, we'd have to do, we'd have to post that on paper or whatever like that there. Um, I would actually with that, I probably would talk to parks. And see if they would be interested in it because it is for a skidster. They have a skidster, I know that. I don't think they have a pusher, I think they just have a snow blower, so it might help them out. Um, I would contact them first to see. Kind of what they would want, if they would want that and then go from there, so.
And. I've been for a few of these parts that are alleged for this year.
Yes, yes. Always making sure I have them, Tommy keeps me on top of that.
So tonight you're looking for a motion?
Yes. Yes.
I would make a motion to make purchase of a snow pusher. Consider on source well.
I'll second that motion. And we have the first and the second, all in favor say aye. Aye. Propose. So moved to Andy, we could, we'll call him. Davis? Yes. Princeton?
Yes.
And Mayor Brooklyn? Yes. Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Next, number 15, we have the engineer reports.
Mayor, I'm hoping for this one. Meetings fairly straightforward, uh, just the standard meeting we did at Ford just on, so finding is all you need. Then in September. Uh, the applications, nothing new, uh, just a bridge issue, a second addition. Still waiting for the current title opinions, so that we can move down. Accessory buildings, uh. The way they have some. Even place is the cell phone events. Not preceding there. And then just the H. Ellison or Ellison Road, uh, right, right. For a process, uh, water reservoir and water main. Uh, tank construction, they do all their work and files, final inspections been completed. Uh, we recommend to each process the final balancing, uh, change order of final. Now location payment to, or contract to the tank construction. Uh, preload, uh, they're currently tearing down the oldest, um, existing water tank. And working on the controls and new, uh, prestressed concrete tank. Once they have that completed, uh, substantial completion locks will be performed. And the new tank is up and running at this point and will just continue to finish that up. Uh, preload had requested a time extension due to material delays, naming mixer to the existing water tank and. That was supposed to put that substantial completion at November 27th and final completion at December 13th.
Thanks.
So they've pushed past that, we're a little bit now and we should be finishing up relatively shortly. Uh, there doesn't appear to be any comeback to the city or any point, so I don't think we need to, too many at this point. So with that, with the water reservoir project, uh, we recommend motion to approve pay application number four for tank construction. And the invoice for engineering as presented.
I'll make the motion to approve the pay application report for tank construction and the invoice for more engineering as presented. We have the first, where you're concerned, Davis, if you're second.
I'll second.
Second, great council, you're still, if you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose, and can we get a vote on this? Princeton?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Berlin?
Yes.
Next project is sanitary sewer regionalization project. Little bit of an update, just to take your back from the status of PMA. They are reviewing the RFI, which will be the national report, so, so they are doing that. They are saying that they are delayed, but some of their staff came deployed to assist with the hurricanes that were earlier this summer. So, so it's even other things across the country, appeared as well. They are also working on their environmental assessment, some of those budgets have been received by DES. So, so it's good to see some progress on that, and small, but, but it was good. So, I spoke with, or reached out to S V H, just to see what the current status of our quality, the key review was. They, this week, we've not seen the answer back yet, so it should be reviewing, but we haven't, haven't been able to confirm our house. Other than that, as soon as those couple of items are done, we'll be ready to give a sound down.
Yay.
Any questions on?
At the moment.
Any concerns yet on, it's taking a little long, if you're gonna set back a start date?
Uh, not at this point, I think we're, worst case, say, even if got pushed back to, say, a good date in March, or even not really April. I think we'd still be okay from contract, being able to start right away. It's just, it's nice, so we can get it done, so they can start ordering materials, making sure. We've got a little bit of time, but maybe we're not a whole lot different this past summer.
Thanks, great to you. Uh, next we'll cover portfolios, starting with customer tips.
So the office had multiple webinars this past week, one was on infrastructure. The utility bills were processed, and they're working on the monthly bills as well, and just trying to catch up on the daily things, that's all I have for this week.
All right, and next would be Castlewoman, or Tavia's. She is, as I said this evening, she did forward me some information. As far as the animal kennel services, Just for Pets has proposed the costs for animal housing. The monthly kennel rental with Just for Pets is three hundred dollars, and thirty-six hundred annually. The daily care fees, thirty per dog, and twenty-five dollars per cat, and then there is a potential partnership. Working with Sarah Berger of Furry Friends Rocket Rescue, to utilize kennels provided by them, that the city could set up in the Blue Shop. With a proposal of those volunteers being provided by Furry Friends Rocket Rescue to care for those impacted animals. And they would be supplying all the necessary food. And I guess anything cheap, do you have anything to add to that?
Uh, biggest thing would be is, right now, we're, you know, evening hours, we're without anywhere to put animals, if we get them in the evenings. So what we're telling residents is, you can hang on to the dogs in the morning, and we can pick it up in the morning and take it off at your hands. But at this time, we don't have access to Just for Pets to put the dogs or cats in the holding areas that we have there, as we did previously. So, really, it's come down to, we have to look at other options, if you wanna go with, continue with Just for Pets, they would like some sort of an assigned contract with, with an annual cost. And so, that's really the biggest part right there, is, is seeing what we need to do with the city. The Furry Friends Rocket Rescue, really, it was because we had a cat in our custody, couldn't get it anywhere else, we called them, and Sarah Berger with them came and picked it up. Actually, I have a phone call her with her later tonight, just to kind of discuss what she had available that she could get to us. Biggest part of that would be is, everything would be donated by Furry Friends Rocket Rescue, so kennels, food, as well as them volunteering their time to come take care of pets, so.
They would be housed where then?
Um, so right now, that's the big question, we, we haven't put anything preliminary. One of the options would be is, if we have kennels, the amount of times we have a dog or cat that needs to stay with us overnight is, is few apart between usually to get a call within that shift. But looking at some of the old buildings that we have, whether it be a blue shop, putting aside a space for one kennel per dog, one kennel per cat. Or even, and I don't even know what the white building used to be, a gas station or whatever it was, even utilizing some space there, so that the dogs can be in there. That would be, those are just options to look into, this is very beginning stages of what we need to do, it's just a matter of. We don't have the thirty-six hundred set aside for our budget at this time, so it'd be something if the city wanted to look at it, we'd have to see what the finals, what it's versus.
And, and you said you're gonna be talking with Sarah this tonight?
Yep.
And so, walk me through the prospect of how it work, I mean.
Of picking up an animal, or, yeah, absolutely, so.
And just for.
Yep, yep, so if we get a call from citizen, community member saying, hey, there's a stray dog in my yard, we go pick it up. We use the scanner, the pet scanner, they have the ID, or they have a tag, or the city of Lincoln license. We get ahold of the owner right away and say, hey, we have your animal, we come and drop it off at your place. If we can't get ahold of anyone, then we wind up having to find a place and import it, which. Prior to, I would say, September, it was super easy, we had key access, we could go drop them off, notify Just for Pets, and they come and take them, take care of for us. And then, when the owner take it ahold of, dispatched and or us at the PD, we advise them that the animal's down at Just for Pets. And then they would receive a citation, and that's how the animal would be released from Just for Pets. And so that's, that's really the simple walkthrough of how we handle those types of situations. And I would say that with the winter months coming up, we've definitely seen a decrease in the amount of animal calls. But, I mean, that is probably one of our biggest calls, is take a balance. And I don't wanna say that, you know, we go to the Bismarck style where they don't, Bismarck officers don't respond to any type of animal call. They turn it over to their animal enforcement officers, we don't have those here, so the only option we would say is, we don't deal with animal calls, which isn't a good service for the city.
That would be a safety issue.
Yeah.
Mrs. Arcadia, do you have any comments, since this is your problem? No, I think, I'm glad to hear that you're gonna speak with her, and I think that sounds like a great solution, and we are excited to learn more about it.
And I, this would be brought, before we made any decisions about space, or, I mean, more or less creating a pound in, you know, Blue Shop or any other city. We bring it before you guys, so we can say, hey, is this something we wanna do, or do we wanna find this six hundred dollars to put? And then, put it in perspective, that is exactly what we would take for using Bismarck's compound as well, just farther away.
Are they over there?
Yeah, it's over, over by the county, yeah, that's, same.
Okay. I thought maybe that was closer.
No.
No, of course. So is that thirty-six hundred dollars in addition to the thirty dollars every day for them?
So, I have had the opportunity to talk with my head officer, Sauer, worked with them, and then he relayed the information to me. Typically, that daily fee is charged to the owner of the pet, the only time we cover that is if nobody claims the pet. And then, before it gets pushed on to a foster or other type of group, and we would cover that cost to, to cover the cost of them taking the animal at that time. So typically, it's, they're reserving two, two spaces, one dog kennel, one cat kennel, when we bring it in, that's what that three hundred dollars monthly cover. And then, anything above and beyond that, what we've done in the past would always be charged out to the owner of the cat and pick up the animal.
Okay. Without everything, I mean, I think that Furry Friends is all, it's very, it's three hundred dollars. That seems like a lot, do you have any animals that are on the lease?
Yes, one hundred percent, I don't remember what morning it was, we had three dogs, right in the parking lot here. Right when I was heading out, when the officer, Otter, and I was setting in for work, and we wound up getting those three dogs up, returned them to the home, and issuing citations. And the citations are not cheap, so, especially if they're, I consider the dogs known offenders, don't get it out, and everything like that. And so, we have the ones that we know, so the nice part is, we know where to bring them back to. Our biggest one, we have a lot of stray cats, we had, and our officers, you know, named, named Diesel, he was actually found in a, the Senex Gas. Station, he was actually inside one of the gas, I don't know, what should we call it, fill stations, so. So we got that one, and Furry Friends Rocket Rescue, I can't pick it up for us. Big thing is, they're all full, all rescues are full, Bismarck, I want to just drop there, I think they had a fourteen day wait for putting animals down. Now, seven, seven days, and no explanation, and now they're out. There's just no space for them, now that being said, I don't wanna turn any of our city buildings into a, you know, animal rescue, because that's, that's a lot of, but. I also want us to be able to assist our citizens, and I would say one of the biggest things would be is, continuing our, our partnership with Just for Pets. It's just a matter of the funding to, to make sure that it's paid for.
How long is it, dog or cat, do you usually have their funding for other, a dog, you know?
Um, so then our officers, three days, roughly, roughly three days. Since I've been on in August, I think we had one cat that we had to find a, a place for, and that was Sarah Berger picked the cat up. And then we had another one that didn't even make there, one of our officers, like, I'll just take the cat home now, and took the cat home, and then Sarah Berger picked them up. So, it's been a great partnership, Sarah lives just out of the community here, which has been phenomenal, so she's, is very willing to help us out when it comes to things of that nature. But, to be able to have something in place, so, I mean, we have a lot of, I mean, I look at our public safety survey that we just, you know, closed out here at the end of November. One of the biggest complaints is from people is dogs on, cats on the lease, and so, it is a big one. You know, we may go, and we haven't had one yet this month, but last month, we had at least four or five, and so, we do get tons of calls, typically. The animals make their way back home, or we assist them and pay for that. And, anything else? So, if you guys are looking for a place to make a kennel, we can move out all of our stuff out of the A-one building, field gas station. If you guys wanna utilize that, basically, what we have in there is just some skidster attachments, we can move that out, and you can have that whole install building. The only part that we would have to keep using is pretty much like the front area of it, or the door of that, just to store, we have our road code signs, stuff like that in there. That's just, like, but there's heat in there, there's all that stuff, if they wanted to take that building over, with the heat and everything, they could, they could do that if they wanted to. So, that's just an option, throw up there.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, sorry.
You can, you're doing the next step.
Um, I don't remember everything, but, but I think our next two options, our next two items for our current officers who are in training. Officer Schneider just completed his phase one from the field training program, so we're super excited for that. That, what that means is that he just finished up with me, and now he goes over to Field Training Officer Tucson, and he'll be with him for about a month and a half. And then he'll go to phase three, where we just sit down, and we're laying clothes, and he shows us what he's learned over his time, and then he'll be out on his own. We're anticipating, we're hoping to have the, at least Officer Schneider, out on his own by February first. Of course, that's contingent upon, you know, how, what training goes. Officer Belgar is currently at the two-week reciprocity training at the North Dakota Law Enforcement Training Academy. What that means is that because of where Officer Belgar came to us from, he had to get his North Dakota license certified, and it's a two-week course where you do criminal traffic. So he's there right now, learning all the fun stuff, and then he will be done on the thirteenth, and he comes to me, does several shifts with me. I anticipate then that he will go to phase two as well, so, we got a good crew, we're, we're doing well. I know we're all stretched a little thin, trying to look at Christmas time here for, for breaks, but I just, I personally wanna say, and I'm. How great I, that our department has been, and how great our officers have been at picking up shifts, taking on overtime, and really just stepping up. So, very much appreciate that, and, and I can't tell them enough how much I appreciate that, so. Did I have one more?
Let's see, there were four hundred sixty-six calls per service, ten arrests made, and I think that's everything.
I have a question about the cost grant, were you able to use that money in order to?
So, so, yep, the money, well, it's our money now, really how it played out is because the city paid more upfront than eighty thousand that came in, is, is. The, is the PD's money to use, at least that we were hoping to use it for position. We have had a whole lot of applicants, we have, we have one that reached out to us, but he, unfortunately, only nineteen years old. And so, wouldn't beat that requirement, we'd have to go back and, and look at how we posted our job position, as well as the requirements of that. We got to buy his handgun and ammo and all that stuff, so, see if we can be able to do that. But, yeah, we're kind of sitting at a point where we're not getting in qualified applicants, we might need to revise our job application. The other part would be is, if we don't get applicants, I would say, by, qualified applicants by end of January, then I come to city council and look at what we can do to utilize that money elsewhere. Because then we're looking at eleven-month position, and at that point, we have to decide, given the time it would take to train, if that's more, turn around and maybe done, we address that, and so.
Well, then it comes up time for that cost grant, that nation is, so, that's.
Did you guys already go over the ordinance about parking?
Yes.
Okay.
We sure did.
Thank you.
All right, that's all I got.
Thank you guys so much, you guys do an amazing job in this department, I'm also grateful, yes.
Any, any questions?
No.
All right, from Princeton, first step.
I would, was, included, and done some curb lines, the snow that were around, I think up the, a lot of mailboxes as well, I'll, I'll do that. And they did some standing along emergency routes, intersections, and if we may, if the traffic sheet has, it's kind of like, to share.
Okay, so, we have been, I've been talking with the school for the last couple of months here, and we did a name the plow. With the fifth grade class, there's five fifth grade classes, so each class came up with a name, and then all the students got to bowl down which one they picked. And the names for the plows that they came up with were Scoop Dog, Polar Plow, Ski Bodie Plow, the Polar Express, Express, and Lightning McLean.
Ski Bodie Plow, the Polar Express, Express and Lightning McLean. So, um. The one they voted on that they picked was Scoop Dog. So I have already contacted a company, they are making me stickers and will be putting them on the cat. Motor plow, so it will now be called Scoop Dog.
It's gotta be a big, big.
Oh, it's like, I measured it out, I got a spot that's like thirteen inches by ten inches tall, literally, so. Um, I should have it on there by Monday of next week.
You guys will be excited to watch for that day, come by.
Yeah, so.
Shades.
No, no, I was, when I seen the list, I was really like, I really wanted Lightning McLean to win, because I had a whole thing, I got Lightning Bolt, it had. Chow on there and everything, and it's getting done up pretty good, but. Um, and then on top of this, uh. We are also doing a find of ornament hunt. We went out and purchased a bunch of Christmas tree ornaments. We are planning on hanging them around town, letting the kids find them. Once they find it, they take a picture with the ornament and then they bring it into the public workshop and they get to pick out a toy. I went to all the businesses in town, I got them all to donate, I got a couple other places in Mandan, all those, a couple other places like that, um. It's all on the website, I put all the names on there, thank you. Um, so it should be pretty fun, uh, I got a. Load of toys down in my office right now, I've been wanting to play with it all week, but I have refrained doing any of that, so. Um, this, the ornament find is going to start on the ninth of December and go to the twentieth. And then our plan is whatever we don't give away, we are going to wrap up and give to a family in need out here, um. So we got that, and don't think we forgot about the adults, um. I talked to the bars and the new liquor store in town and they've been willing to cut for adults, because you know, some of the kids ain't old enough to go out by themselves, so. Might as well let the adults get in on the action too, so, um, yeah, it's kind of the stuff we've been working on here for this this month, so.
That's wonderful.
Yes, it's a lot more work I just put on myself all the time, I don't know why I do it, but. I don't know if we've ever done anything like this, so I just kind of wanted to do something different and get to get something to do while it's cold outside.
I've seen you in a red suit all of a sudden.
I've been trying to talk, one of the guys in wearing Santa suit and he's, he's pretty adamant on wearing the Grinch suit and not the Santa suit, so.
See, you'd be Santa, he'd be Grinch.
Yeah, I'll discuss the other guy up as Max too, I'll just give him a helmet of a warm gun and.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
I don't stay here, oh.
Well, uh, just don't go.
That's all I have.
So next is my portfolio and to undermine. How? We, I had asked, uh. To discuss the emergency snowdrifts. As as part of this, because I want, uh. That we have a new area through our annexation resolution. That the city is now going to be responsible for maintaining those snowdrifts, so I had just asked. Director Shipp, if he would describe his plan. For addressing those extra roads.
So with the additional roads that we have, that basically what we've gotten is three gravel roads that we have to maintain now with this annexation and. With the gravel roads, I looked it up and I did some research on what is best on those for plowing them and everything and. I found that using like a rubber, rubberized blade on a snowplow is the best way to do it. So I purchased a rubber blade for our freight liner. Uh, snowplow and we will be cleaning off those gravel roads with that. Um, basically, my plan is, we're gonna have four guys, I got four pieces of equipment, I'm gonna have a guy in a loader. Guy in the loader grader doing the south side, starting down here, we're just throughout everything. I'll be in a loader, I'll be on the north side, doing that up there by myself. And then I'll have the fourth guy, he'll be in the plow truck and he'll hit those gravel roads right away. And then he will come back and if time allows, he's gonna go hit the. Move snow in the cul-de-sacs everywhere and be back here before the office opens to clean up. The office parking space for them and then the parking lot in front of the shop. So if time doesn't allow for that, he's just gonna clean those roads, come back, clean the parking spot for the office, then go do cul-de-sacs, so. Um, that's pretty much my plan for the winter, if I can have a full staff, that's will happen, if I can't, um. We will get to them. So.
Will there be any new um, emergency routes added to the emergency route list?
No.
Okay, thank you.
So.
All right, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
I. I had, other than just the standard meetings that I do, it's not, um, I did go to Apple Creek Township. Meeting and one of the questions that really popped into my mind or one of the conversation pieces was. The maintenance, snow maintenance on twenty-two and eighty. And how, because we are only half of those roads, what are thoughts are on how we're going to address that? And you said fifty-second and eighty, twenty-second and eighty. So and those are the budding up to Apple Creek, so we want to make sure that, you know, I mean, we can't really go down half the road. And and make it usable, so I don't know what the answer is. I don't know if if that's a discussion anybody's had yet, or if it reached out to Apple Creek, maybe. You know, we take eighty and they take twenty-two, as the county does.
Eighty, it's the county.
Eighty is county, twenty ten rivers, right, okay, so. I guess only one of the roads would be us, the other county, do you work with? Is the county already here, I'm twenty-second is one of the areas where we have a creek.
They they take care of, you know, county takes care of what they've been doing in Apple Creek as well, so I think it's going to be more of a. Probably interested in Apple Creek, more concerned about, um, just what the specials that happened that. Were helping them out, um, doing that, so. I've not talked to the county or the township yet, um, but we should probably. Have just a meeting with Terry, myself. Uh, you the councilman, you aren't staying out of yourself here, and just kind of decide what we want to do and propose that. And.
And and that should probably be sooner rather than later, because we're a bit of a push. Thankfully, some of it's melting this weekend. And then that may be the discussion to include at Apple Creek.
Yeah, I would say we talk about it first in that and then have the discussion of that, so.
Order of adjustments, I am happy to relay that they're going to, or the variance. Was improved uh, due to the interpretation of. The ordinance, so it wasn't necessarily variance.
So that's within the commercial zoning district, there's a listing of. And order of adjustment by ordinance has the ability to add. Uh, a use that is consistent with that listing, so within the commercial. Groups there, uh, are listings for retail stores and the like, order of adjustments. And added a use group for pet store, basically. Which is within the authority of the Board of Adjustments, so I'm careful to say it's not a variance, right, the order of adjustments is not. Change the zoning, they just added the use that's consistent. Ordinance is in zoning code, can't list every single commercial use, so the idea is to have some discretion to. To add a last decision to that, put a description in that, so very comfortable in the process that I can help you out.
Okay, so now we go forward with that, uh, thank you, attorney, right, to be. I, yesterday, there was a biennium, North Dakota League of Cities Biennial Legislative Workshop. And we got to listen to uh, Governor Hergon's final budget discussion. A lot of the discussions going on are, you know. Purposely looking at property tax, income tax and taking a look at, I mean, the citizens are wanting. So I want some of this center to be purposeful. So we'll be hearing a lot about that over the next few months, session starts up in January, so it's exciting. Uh, Capital Electric is going to be at the December nineteenth meeting. Uh, the general manager, Paul Federer, he's had been here before, he's going to uh, be discussing. To maintenance a gun. It will be a proposed draft maintenance, uh, the Public Works Engineering and looking over. For the lights, city lights and transitioning from those wood poles. To disturb your cement posts, what's it's gonna look like and, uh. You know, this has been a few months that we've been doing this, so it'll be the first time that presenting that information to you, again, this is just drafting. But we kind of wanted to have a a hold by year end, to say, yes, this is what happens. Uh, in that process, there is going to be. A franchise agreement, it's been discussed, uh, the attorney had sent me today, a.
Ninety twenty.
Yes.
So, um, and I think I discussed this with the council, assuming you're on council then. So Capital Electric came to the council, I want to say maybe eleven months ago, wanting a renewed franchise. Um, we identified in my office potential conflict interest, so we're city attorney, but from time to time, we have done legal work. For capital, they're not related to anything with the city of Lincoln, but in other district projects, so. We had discussed with the city and with Capital Electric, both. The city and Capital Electric signing a conflict waiver, we should basically recognize this, that we have this relationship with. Um, the city, the city would like us to work on this, these projects, franchise agreement, any of the agreements. Um, but also disclose that we have the reason for Capital Electric to pass, so, um. We have drafted a conflict waiver to the council consideration, we'll put that on the agenda uh, for the next meeting. Um, see council, take a look at it, we've also, uh, Capital Electric had provided a draft franchise agreement. Gavin and Kevin, we're pointing out, we we have to have everybody circulating. Uh, both to the council and to Capital Electric, but the next step is we need to solve this conflict issue. Certainly, if you're comfortable, you can, you can. Waive the conflict here and the process, or if you wanted to have made a certain.
And and I did bring a copy of it, so I was hoping to repeat this goal. Especially since I'm the youngest, we can assign it. If. If there's questions, if you're concerned about it, it's, uh. I could read it, the consent to representation and waiver of potential conflict, Vogel Law Firm. About Vogel, this city attorney for the city of Lincoln. Vogel has previously provided legal representation to Capital Electric Cooperative on matters unrelated to the city of Lincoln. Uh, Capital Electric and the city would like to negotiate a new franchise agreement and or other agreements mutually beneficial to each and the city. Would like Vogel to act as its attorney, because of Vogel's prior representation of Capital Electric and. Are on unrelated matters, potential conflict of interest exists. In Vogel's representation of the city as part of the franchise and or other agreements. To address the potential conflict, Vogel requires the city and Capital Electric to both. Consent to Vogel's representation of the city and waiver of any conflict. The city and Capital Electric each desire to provide this conflict waiver. Now therefore, the city and Capital Electric each hereby acknowledge and agree that each has fully. Has been fully advised and understands the actual potential conflict of interest that may arise for Vogel's. Representation of the city concerning a franchise agreement and other agreements between the city and Capital Electric. That each voluntarily and freely waives any conflict of interest that may exit or exist. Or hereafter arise in connection with the negotiations of agreements between the city and Capital Electric. Each voluntarily and freely consent Vogels acting as legal counsel to the city in connection with any agreements between the city and Capital Electric. And that each has obtained or has the opportunity to obtain independent legal counsel regarding the. Uh, propriety of entering into this conflict waiver. This conflict waiver may be executed in counterparts, each of which, as so executed, shall be deemed to be an original. But all of which together shall constitute one and the same instrument. The back suddenly signature, signatures delivered by email transmission shall be acceptable as an original for all purposes. And then I would uh, sign, the auditor would sign and they would. So if council president was willing. That I would be to sign this or at the time to sign this.
I would say in the few months that I've been on this board, like our journey. I would say that I have an office on everything.
I would agree with those comments, uh, councilman, you have said. We have no objection. Uh, right, so does that need the motion?
I think a motion, just authorizing. I would make a motion to.
We have a motion by Councilman Portstead, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Uh, seventy-nine, Councilman Davis on the paper say aye.
Aye.
Post. And could be the real column. Trario?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Roonstead?
Yes. I'll just say for the record, I I don't believe I've ever represented Capital Electric, I have. It's so long that I can't remember, uh, and as long as we're working on this, then I might as well be representing. Just for the city, but lawyers in my office have, like I said, I'm looking for down. This is just to make sure that everybody understands.
So I will do that and send that up for them, and again, I, all better, general manager will be here on the nineteenth. To present some of that information to you, um. Also, I, I had mentioned that legislative session is starting up in January and. League of Cities will be compiling all of this city specific. League of Cities will be compiling all of this city specific. Let's just like, thank you. Uh, and. We'll have updates on Friday for you to go out to their website. And if you would like. I can give an update at the meetings, um, as far as whether motion or anything going in. They won't all start in June. Or leave it up to you. I don't wanna take your time with council.
I would say that I think that that stuff would be kind of interesting, but I don't know if. Everyone watching or attending the meetings would wanna sit through all that. Post the information.
I absolutely, I could have it just part of. The package. And that way I can be forwarded via email. To anybody who's on that list, so. And then if there are any, of course, you know, you can testify on any of these things, so. That is what I have.
I'm just gonna start out with, and in the last couple weeks, since the last council meeting, I have not given you that thing back. Um, regarding our audit for twenty-two and twenty-three. But I do want you to know, once we get that done, I'm gonna turn around, we're gonna do twenty-twenty fours. Um, I like to keep more on a yearly basis because it's a lot of work to pull all the information that they need. Um, for two years at a time and it takes a lot of time, so, um. We have the right to do a yearly or a two-year. But with the amount of work, like you said, that it takes to pull and get all of their information, I think it'd be easier to keep it on a yearly basis. Um, my next thing was, I got a call today from the North Florida State, um, Tax Department. Um, at Johnson, by the name of Mike. So, um, he wanted to let us know that the city of Lincoln will not. For the month of December and possibly January, did any, um. City sales tax to us. Um, they cannot give details, it's confidential information, but there was a business, um. That was paying. Approximately, what he said is a thousand dollars a year for Lincoln taxes. And, um, they have gone under an audit, this company, and. Um, we now have to pay back, um, the amount of taxes that he has paid. Um, they caught it in the audit, um. That it wasn't correct, so it's gonna take all of our Decembers and possibly some of our Januaries city sales tax. So we will not be getting any.
Oh, this business was over.
Neither. They were a business that. This is all he could tell me because it is confidential. There was a business that may have been doing business out here that was part of Lincoln. And whether they moved and they opened up somewhere else, he was still paying the city's sales tax to Lincoln instead of. Maybe wherever else he was, or maybe he went under, but. They're, they're going back and doing a, a long-term audit on this company. And they had found that he was paying, um, city sales tax for Lincoln, which was not correct. And since we have those funds, we have to return those funds, so they will take it out of any funds that. We will be getting in, um. December and possibly January until it's back in the, in the positive. There's nothing we can do about it, um. It could even leave us, he said, um, with a negative balance. Maybe at the February, he wasn't sure, it just depends on what amounts been reported, what amount we would have got, the amount that, um, we have to pay back. Um. So that's all I, um, really know about that, um. Just gonna let you know, the annexation has been recorded, I'm waiting for a couple things on, um, a plot map, but, um. I talked to Brandy from the State Tax Department. And, uh, because we're getting questions about the sales tax that they have to pay on that and stuff, and it's. Once I get the information in, um, to her. Um, it's usually within sixty, she gave between sixty and ninety days, she said normally sixty days, they will send out a letter to those people. Um, and let them know when it takes them back.
On the annexation, because there's an issue that will be bringing to the council at the next meeting. So we have been in. And Greg's been involved and Mayor Smith's involved in discussions with the. Recorder. About trying to finalize the annexation and. The controlling statute. Indicates that as part of the annexation, city is to report a map. Of the annexed territory. And so, if you recall, we came to the council, the council paid for, uh, survey, basically, so that we could report the map. And after we got that done, the recorder said, well, no, we're not recording that. We want you to do this. And not record a map. And so we think there's tension now between. Recorder's interpretation of how. Incomplete an annexation and what we believe. Um, should be done, and the question is whether or not the city, what the city must, so we'll be coming. To you with some information about that, but then the resolution was recorded. Along with what the recorder basically demanded. Um, but that's different from. A more, we paint the law says, because statute is very clearly says you're supposed to record a map. And we have not recorded a map. And it's because of what we're working on that we have, so we have to figure out. Whether we wanna hold that, so. So trying to figure out what to do here, we have the city saying one thing, but the governor saying it's a whole different thing. And, um, we haven't, we don't have an answer for that. Sorry.
That's, that's all right.
Just to let you know, when he says there's an issue with the, with the, the annexation with those command, that's what the issue is, it's, uh.
But it has been recorded.
But it has been recorded.
And I can send that information into. The, uh, State Tax Department so they can get. If there's any businesses within that area. That have to be taxes, they will send those letters out and. And do what they need to do so that they're, they're being paid. So that kind of takes it out of my hands. Um, my next thing is, um, I still don't have October, uh, statement completed. Since we went to the customer portal. Um. With the fines being able to be paid. We're having an issue with Lincoln, North Dakota and Lincoln, Nebraska. So I am getting deposits and withdrawals on the October statement. Um, that do not belong to us. So I can't get it to balance. So they are working on getting the list. Of. Amounts. Um. There should be credits and debits and get that taken care of hopefully by the end of December. Because obviously November's over with and we're trying to get this straightened out and trying to find out where these charges are coming from because I can't find them. So I'm having a little difficulty, but we are working on it. I'm hoping by the next meeting that I can have Octobers and Novembers, and we are gonna have the same issue with November. Um, we're gonna. They have now caught that issue, um. Like I said, because I kept saying to these companies, I don't know where these charges are coming from, we don't show these, we don't have these, we don't have these amounts. So, um, they finally figured that out this morning. I got an email stating, or yesterday morning stating that. They have now come to realize that, uh, people are paying. On Lincoln, North Dakota, and they go by codes and the gal was, oh, Lincoln, not really looking. Maybe more soda or. Nebraska, so I am having a little difficulties, like I said, I hope it's. I hope to have them both completed November, uh, Octobers and Novembers by our next, but I, I can't guarantee that. And so I have.
All right, I do have one left here. Thank you to Mark Engineering, uh, they did send over for council. Christmas. Socks. Is there, there. I don't know if we'd want to just keep that in the office. Rather than be Indian or how you want to handle that.
Depends, there's chocolate. It's pistachios, small barbecue.
Chips.
Um.
Spicy.
Spicy, uh, hotels. I'll take responsibility for that. Did you really? I was out when the other box came and then I was really hungry and I was late the other day and so I did. It was a little tiny thing. I was frustrated with the statement.
So I don't.
I find passing on that.
There you go. So should we just leave it in there? All right, but thank you for more, for delivering that to us, very kind. Lots of everything.
I know.
So, uh, if there is no other business for the council, I will let the jury, it is eight o'clock.